It's now seven o'clock. Council's regular meeting of the board of aldermen in order. A roll call please, is that it?
Alderman Gorman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Here.
Alderman Madley.
Here.
Alderman Borah.
Here.
Alderman Ward. Alderman Wilkins.
President.
All right, we have a form tied. First one can't take place. Do you strongly agree to place? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Consent agenda? No, actually, the, uh... Information in your packet, if any, changes or things like that. But this should be...
Nope. Just want to type on the public works minutes. Because the title of the press report would... But should be... The T should be aligned. That's the last line, you know. Public work, please, public works minutes.
Okay.
Where was the correction? Page three of the public works minutes. The middle page where it says capital budget request, the next to last line, and bud, that should say I, B U Y instead of B U T.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Let me make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the correction as noted.
Second. I have a motion and second to accept the consent agenda as amended. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Council's payable over twelve fifty? We cut some page twenty-five. Any questions? Comments? Was there not saying anything? I guess we're pretty involved, right?
Yeah.
What is that, recently grown no more? Is that something for the...
Tightened industries?
Tightened industries.
Uh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Let me catch up with you.
That's fine.
You're, uh... One of the, uh...
Step for something, grease traps or...
I can find out for you. I don't know off the top of my head.
I just wanted to worry if it's leak doors or something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd have to look and see it.
Okay.
I approved it at the time, so I signed off on it and was convinced it was necessary at the time, but I can't remember exactly what that product was.
That's fine. I was just curious. I would imagine. Thanks.
I can think of about four different possible answers, but I'd rather guess the right one.
That's fine.
It's actually...
I've just never seen anything up here before, that's all. But that's all right. Motion will be ordered if there are no further questions?
Make a motion to pay the accounts payable over twelve fifty down to three hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars and forty cents.
Second? No, motion and second to approve the accounts payable over twelve fifty in the amount of three hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars and forty cents. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Comments from citizens? Open the floor for comments from citizens. Any comments you'd like to make?
I think it's here about the last, or the, uh...
Okay.
New business.
All right. There are no further comments. Close of the comments from citizens. Economic development report from the Chamber of Commerce. Something in the, in the packet? Any discussion?
I'm sorry.
The Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, okay. I think that contract comes up in April.
Yeah. Think the, uh... Who had said it before, but the tractor parade was pretty well attended. Very well attended. Yeah.
Is that a chamber event?
Uh, combination, sort of. Yeah, there's a combination. It's separate. Separate chamber of enforcement.
Coordinators and everything.
All right. Action agenda, finance and permits license, nothing scheduled there? Is that still the case? Legal, authorizing compensation for certain city employees. This is an ordinance. Will require two readings. And if you...
Okay.
Uh, if you remember, um, last week, we had a closed meeting about, uh, that's six months review and, uh, competed very well. So the board has authorized him a salary increase and an additional week's vacation. So this is a ordinance. Alderman Borah, would you introduce this one?
Bill number? Twenty-seven thirty-two. I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-two be given its first reading by title only.
Second? I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-two be given its first reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to fix the compensation of a certain employee of the city of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-two be given its second reading by title only.
Second? I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-two be given its second reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to fix the compensation of a certain employee of the city of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-two be adopted by a roll call vote.
Second? I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-two be adopted by a roll call vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, please, there.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Madley.
Yes.
Alderman Borah.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Borah.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven thirty-two passes. Now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-seven ninety-two.
Twenty-seven ninety-two. Congratulations. Next is a amending section two dash eleven of the Centaria City Code regarding qualifications for aldermen. This is an ordinance.
I can talk about that primarily. It's to revise the, uh... The years of age that a person can be an alderman down to eighteen. By, uh, that's a state law that's been changed, and this is an ordinance to keep up with that. In addition, uh, the, uh, section provides for what the person shall not be a delinquent at the time of filing and, uh, as far as filing or payment of, of certain things, taxes and that kind of thing. So that was also revised to state what the current state law is on the subject. And, uh, both of these things have been, uh, shown on the city clerk's, uh, information sheet for candidates.
Okay. I take it that both of these are pretty much mandated by state law?
They're, that's what's required by state law, yes.
Okay. Alderman Wilkins, would you introduce this one, please?
Uh, bill number, please.
Twenty-seven thirty-three.
I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-three be given its first read by title only.
Second? I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-three be given its first reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
An ordinance amending Centaria City Code, section two dash eleven regarding qualifications for aldermen. I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-three be given its second reading by title only.
Second? I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-three be given its second reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
An ordinance amending Centaria City Code, section two dash eleven regarding qualifications for aldermen. I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-three be adopted by roll call vote.
I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-three be given its, uh, be adopted by a roll call vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, please, there.
Alderman Madley.
Yes.
Alderman Borah.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Gorman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes. All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven thirty-three passes, and now becomes ordinance, ordinance number...
Twenty-seven ninety-three.
Purchasing. Authorizing this, the mayor and city clerks of Centaria, Missouri, to execute agreement with General Code of Rochester, New York, to provide an electronic version of the Centaria City Code and to provide web hosting services described as standard Ecode three sixty in the agreement. This also is an ordinance as far as two readings. Any further discussion on this?
General Code is the same as Sullivan Publications.
The, um, city, the general governor and public safety committee saw a presentation from Mike Barry, who has been the main force behind Sullivan Publications, which has recently been purchased by General Code. That's what he kind of described to the committee. And so, uh, this board also saw a presentation from UniCor, UniCode Corp at its last meeting. My understanding, the board, bill, board was to move forward with their updating of our online quote presence with the success for Sullivan Publications, which is General Code. The ordinance has been drafted to accomplish this, and this would be the Ecode three sixty standard, which is the middle of the three packages presented. Uh, you guys received the, uh, contract in your last packet.
Okay.
I think you've seen it twice, so that, we, we, there are no changes to any of it. We've been with General Code. The original contract was, uh, just, uh... Something like that. Well, no one before that. It was just, yeah, I can't remember the exact year I saw, I found the contract and then... But anyways, but we've been with just Sullivan for a number of years.
Okay.
And the, the, the look has already been changed online.
Okay. Alderman Lane, would you put their name, so, please?
Sure.
Twenty-seven thirty-four.
I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-four be given its first read by title only.
Second? I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-four be given its first reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centaria, Missouri, to execute an agreement with General Code of Rochester, New York, to provide an electronic version of the Centaria City Code and to provide web hosting services described as standard Ecode three sixty in the agreement. I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-four be given its second reading by title only.
I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-four be given its second reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of Centaria, Missouri, to execute an agreement with General Code of Rochester, New York, to provide an electronic version of the Centaria City Code and to provide web hosting services described as standard Ecode three sixty. I move that bill number twenty-seven thirty-four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second? I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-seven thirty-four be adopted by a roll call vote. All those who favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Roll call vote, please, there.
Alderman Borah.
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Gorman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Madley.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven thirty-four passes, and now becomes bill number, or ordinance number...
Twenty-seven ninety-four.
All right. Old business, long-term power purchase, RFP.
Uh, the Mid-Missouri Group, or MMG, met last Tuesday in Hannibal, and we've narrowed down the search to basically four entities, Constellation, Nex Energy, uh, Dynergy, which is the third, was Ameren Energy Marketing, then became Illinois Power Marketing, and now is our Dynergy. And then the, uh, uh, last, uh, one of the four companies that are still in the running is, uh, Great, uh, Big Rivers, is which is actually a co-op. Those are the best prices we've received. There are some questions, I'm sorry, AEP. AEP is the third, the third one, uh, which, uh, anyway, uh, A, uh, which is out of Columbus Ohio, uh, and Great Rivers is about like, the, the Big Rivers is about makes it a final cut. These are based on the prices and their willingness to accept risk. These are based on the assumption that we wanted all requirements, uh, which means they take the risk for, you know, um, price hikes, et cetera. We set a capacity which we're putting at ten megawatts. Uh, we have not exceeded that in our history. The, uh... So the, so that, we're going back to them for more negotiation, but those are the four that we narrowed it down to. Right now Constellation, um, is, has the best price, and they're willing to accept the risk particularly for any changes, um, that may come about with the greenhouse gas emissions. And those prices are based on an estimate of a ten dollar per metric, or ten dollar per ton of, uh, CO2 emission, a tax, which is one of the less onerous propositions out there, if anything gets through. So, um, so that's the main gist of it. We've also came up at the meeting based on some of the discussion, particularly from Bob Stevenson from Hannibal, the idea of selling our capacity back to the market for the energy for between now and twenty seventeen, between now and June first of twenty seventeen, when this contract would go into effect. Up till now, Prairie State Generation has not been reliable enough to sell it into the market for our capacity, uh, but now it is. So there is a chance that we could sell that and actually just get some money back. Uh, right now, we're paying for the capital cost and energy, uh, at Prairie State, and then that's being sold back into the market to get some of that back. It has now been operational and been getting enough, um, you know, we're getting seventy-five percent, getting close to seventy-five percent, um, availability. So there, we may be able to get, you know, tens of thousands of dollars worth of money back on this for that, for that period of epex. As much as, and that's very early, so it's, I want to remain vague because it's all pretty much discussion right now, but it's, but I may have a letter for you to look at, at the pub, public works and public utility meeting. So right now, it's early on. Bob Harbor's only been looking into this since Tuesday. He's already moved pretty quickly and gotten some, some responses back from Dynergy and some of the other. So we'll bring you the best option. I think the market, the auction for these is coming up, so by the next meeting, we may have to make some kind of a, uh, give me direction as to which way to go for a letter. It's, it's actually kind of exciting that something we may, um, get a cash return on our, the capacity we purchased in Prairie State. Now, I'm not saying we haven't gotten anything out of it. I didn't mean to seem like that. That's not like that it would be something tangible in the short term. So, but the, uh, but we're still a while away from anything looking like a contract on long-term power, and, um, we're looking at, um, you know, about, we're about twenty, we're less than twenty percent of this deal. Hannibal's about sixty percent, and they're looking at some other options. Instead of purchasing set sixty megawatts, they might be looking for forty, which changes the dynamic a lot, because they may be looking for other options, maybe, or, or something like that. Again, these are very vague numbers, because there's a lot to be decided. Anyway, that's, uh, that, it's, it's, you know, high cost, a big part of our budget, pretty important, and we're, we've got some good people working on it, and I think we're gonna have some... Uh, all of the costs are higher than we're paying now for power starting in twenty seventeen, but, um, they're, some of the better ones are only like a six or seven percent increase, and that would be a three-year fixed price. So it would be, I mean, we're, we're not looking at any, um, jarring changes. That's about, that's all I got to say on that.
Thanks. New business? Do you have one appointment that I can make this evening? Uh... Oh, yes. Okay. Take it back, I got two. Thank you. Thank you. The, uh, first one I'd like to make, Chester Fritsch from the Cemetery Board. Uh, had resigned due to some health issues. Talked with Phyllis, and she's talked to John Popovich, who's currently the chair of the tree board, and he's agreed to step up and, uh, be appointed to the cemetery board.
Is he gonna remain on the tree board?
Yes.
Being poached.
Yeah. I'd like to make that appointment.
The appointment would be just till April, when, uh, that term ends.
Correct, and I'll have to reappoint. Second? I have a motion and second to accept the appointment of John Popovich to the Cemetery Board. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And also, I would like to, uh, make the appointment of Norberto Mendez to the, uh, position of full-time police officer in the city of Missouri. Uh, he currently serves as a part-time, and she tried to help me come up, and I already moved Norberto to a full-time officer.
I have a motion to accept that appointment.
Second?
Just one question. What is the effective date of that?
February first. Yep, February first. Okay. I have a motion and second to accept the appointment of Norberto Mendez to the position of full-time police officer. Effective February first. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any new business for the aldermen? All right. City minster?
The, on the, uh, agenda, we have the Thomas Owen subdivision, um, and Darren Adams has possibly hear about that. The, uh, Thomas Owen subdivision was originally platted in nineteen seventy-five, and about nineteen ninety-seven, ninety, I actually have a, uh, handout, I just made a copy of this tonight, and I've got a couple of extras for the, for the audience. Could this, just to orient yourself, this is, this is a piece of property we're talking about. It's along, uh, Campbell, well, this is part, this is a, this is a map, sort of, this isn't actually, this is not a plat, this is a map that was in the file, uh, from when we had discussions in ninety-seven, ninety-eight. If you have an extra one, we're, uh, out there. Walter Campbell, uh, approached us and asked us to put in, um, water and electric service. Uh, he, originally, this was platted as, um, twenty-seven, twenty-seven hundred and, or twenty-seven seventy-five foot...
Just seventy.
Uh, sorry, seventy-foot lots. I'm trying to do the math. Seventy times two divided, anyway, seven times three divided by two. They did lot splits for all, for, for the nine lots on Ginno Chance and built them as six, uh, hundred-and-five-foot lots, and we installed the water and electric, uh, based on just a letter. We never had them replatted. We never, um, uh, there was never any, I would, I would say there was never anything that would approach the level of contract. We did agree to spend about six thousand dollars to put in rock that became, you know, for Campbell Street, but the development did not move forward. So what exists now are, um, eighteen legal platted lots along Campbell Street that are seventy feet long, seventy feet wide, and, uh, the electric and water hookups, they, that walk, that are arranged for a hundred-and-five-foot lots. The develop, the owner of the property is here today. He's been asking me to come up with a, a cost.
I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the...
The Campbell family owned it.
Yeah, okay. The manager, who has been taking care of and mowing the properties out there, is here with us today. Um, and I, and he's been asking me for a price. I haven't, I have not given him one yet, but I figured one out for this rough estimate. The, uh, the electric department, now, this is based on the idea that the current electric service in there is put in in a, in a style with these meter packs that we don't use much anymore. So, um, Mark said it would probably be just as good to go back in and replace it all. So that is a higher cost than trying to fit something in to work with, um, the, the eighteen lots. I'm not saying that's the only solution, but that cost would be about thirteen thousand dollars. That's based on the cost of what, what it cost us to put in telecord. Um, the, the, uh, water department, sewer would have, there would not need to be very many changes. The sewer lines are in the front, there's a, there is a, um, a sewer line that runs, uh, north diagonally across, oh, I don't have the, uh, the lot number, so, two of the, sort of the edge of two lots. To the south, it cuts right down the middle of one of the nine lots. It would be between what's, what's shown on this little, uh, map here, between, um, what is three oh two, two fourteen, two fifteen, and three oh one. So it goes right down, it was, since it was put in based on the idea of, uh, going from twenty-seven to eighteen lots, it would go right down the middle of one of the existing platted lots, but right between the, um, lot splits on Ginno Chance and what would have been lot splits on Campbell Street. So that would eliminate the ability to do a full eighteen lots on Campbell Street and end up with seventeen lots. So the cost of putting water for that would be right around, uh, to do one cro, one cut across the street in an estimate of about a thousand dollars in rock, but somewhere around ninety thousand dollars. So our cost to put the new utilities in would be twenty-two thousand dollars. And then, because right now, um, and then I don't know how mu, I don't know if I want to say, if you want to say anything about what you're contemplating out there, but right now, he has eighteen legally platted lots, and he could sell them. The city would technically be responsible for any upgrade to the street that we've moved. I think there's some sort of idea, because it, there, there's, this is a legal subdivision based in nineteen seventy-five.
Which was an agreement at one point, that had to be paid before they, they would be allowed to build on that.
Uh, there, we have some letters in the, in the file that indicate that they want them at, at, uh, twelve, they want, they want twelve lots along Campbell Street, and we put in six thousand dollars of worth of rock to make it a, a lot, but, you know, I have not, I've not found anything that said that, to, to, that was that strong, but I, you know, go back through the pot, but, but I think that was the agreement. I think that, that's what I've been told was kind of the idea. But that was not, that was a previous owner. Uh, well, I guess it's the family that still owns the lot. Walter Campbell. But that was not, that was a previous owner, that, well, I guess it's the family that still owns the lot, Walter Campbell's. So I guess the question is, what, what, what is the city willing to do, and what is the city not willing to do to make those viable lots? And that's just the opening of the discussion, just want to make you guys aware of that, that, that at this point, you're considering the different possibilities for.
Right, and, and I'll start off, I'll kind of give you some background on my end and things, and I, I came to Matt, brought this to his attention, and said, you know, what, what do we do? Um, this has been in the Campbell family since seventy-five, I think, and they did sell a few lots off in the early nineties, I think it was, and um. I was, I mowed it for, ever since I was a little kid, and they called me and said, hey, you know, there's, we're getting up there in age. Our grandkids and kids have no desire to come back to Centralia, this might be something that we might get rid of. What can we do, how's everything going, you know, figure it out, and so these are some of the things that I kind of brought up to them, well. It's platted to seventy-foot lots, my personal opinion is, there was nothing recorded, there was nothing, nothing done. That said, the city had to go in there and put the stuff in, and so the way I look at it is, if they want to sell seventy-foot lots. So be it, that's their, that's their prerogative, and granted, with the Campbell family's. Long-going time in this community some time ago, they don't want to do anything to cause numerous waves. However, in the same breath, they don't want to put theirself in a financial stress, that's gonna cost them a ton of money either, and so I was asked to come here and. And kind of more or less help facilitate a way that, that's beneficial for the city and beneficial for, for them. So more or less, just opening discussion right now of.
Well, this, this probably stupid question, but what is the significance of a seventy-foot lot?
You get more of them. You get, you get more of them, and, and from a marketing standpoint, you know. Those lots in, in the early nineties, and I'd have to go back and check to be sure, it's been probably six months or a year since I even looked at what the old contracts were. But I think they were in, you know, real close to twenty, to where now, they wouldn't bring twenty, in my opinion, even if. Even if they were a hundred-and-five-foot lots, because you got all the competition with Mystic Ridge, Southwest Circle, or Southwest Country Estates and things. And so what they want to do is, they want to put theirself in a competitive situation, to be able to compete against these other smaller subdivisions and whatnot. Which had the lot size of eighty-foot lots, and so a seventy-foot lot versus an eighty-foot lot, from a marketing standpoint, it's gonna be no difference in value, really.
So they, they would have to then replat this?
No, it's already, it's already planted for seventy-foot lots.
They, they're currently planted seventy-foot feet, theoretically, I can't imagine anybody would, theoretically, he could sell the seventy-foot lots on a rock street. And I went. It was, it was, I mean, there are letters in here saying, you know, Mr. Campbell's, we're gonna do, we're gonna do these lots, our intention is to do these lot splits, and letters from Lynn saying. Okay, if you're gonna do these lot splits, we'll put in, we'll do this. I don't know that they raised, I don't know, from what I've seen in here, there was a promise or a contract, I'm not sure that would have been. You know, I just, yeah, so. The, the, the possibility exists of, and I, America can slap me when I go too far here, but of coming up with some kind of metaphorical. That we can come up with some sort of agreement, where we can enter into some sort of, you know, of what each party will require. Obviously, if we had forced to replat it back at the time, it would have been taken care of, that's all, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty. Uh, at the, you know, we've had a history of trying to make things work for the people who want to invest their money in, in development. It kind of hasn't, if it, everything doesn't go through, though, it, it, there's a, you know, it's. Potential of.
Where, where the bigs, not to interrupt you or anything, but where the big sticking point was, that where Matt and I kind of. Were, were talking to where things started to get hairy, was that at first, Matt said, well, it's just like a new subdivision. You know, you gotta put curb and gutter streets in, and things like that, and that's when I said, well, no, you know, it's. E, even though, I understand the city doesn't have the money to go out there and.
What, what I said was, if this was a brand new.
Right, right, absolutely, I'm sorry, you know, I understand the city doesn't have money to go out there and put streets in for developers, that's why things change. But in the same breath, I don't see how the city could stand up and say, and stomp and say, oh, just because you waited twenty years to do it. Now you have to abide by what the standards are today of curb and gutter streets with storm sewer and so on and so forth. And so I, I don't think the family or myself is trying to, to push everything onto the city. But I think in the same breath, that they're not expecting for everything to get pushed onto them.
So what is the cost of putting a street in there?
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
Forty-eight thousand.
Was, was the estimate that I got from APAC to do a six-inch, it might have been eight-inch, I don't remember. Don, what do we do out there?
You mean for asphalt?
Yeah.
Uh. Was there any rock under there? There was just.
No, there was no rock.
There was six inches of asphalt there.
Okay.
And I believe that's correct.
I think, and, and I'm pretty sure it was six inches of asphalt out there.
Or is the base and do it again.
Going on top of what the, the gravel base is, and doing no curb and gutter.
That's, that's forty-eight thousand, no curb, no gutter.
Correct.
And, and roll curb.
And that was if everything was set perfect on grade as it sits, which we all know, but it's, it's not.
And, and they're willing to, to do that?
That was the estimate I had from them.
But is the family willing to pay for that?
I don't know.
Okay.
My, you all are my last piece of the puzzle.
And I'm not looking for a decision.
Right.
There's one, this is a, you know, we pull over, and we have this discussion. But the building season is coming, and Darren has been.
Well, and, and yes, and it's been sitting there for a long time, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, I, you know, I absolutely don't expect a decision tonight, you know.
So there is a like, some of the preliminary electricity is out there, but it's antiquated, and we don't want to use that anymore?
We have the s, we have the standard for nineteen ninety-eight. For, for twelve, uh, well, for, yeah, for twelve lot, no, wait, yeah, twelve lots along Campbell Street. They, they're using what's called meter packs, which, it does, it, you know, you can't just take a, unfortunately, you can't just.
Kind of like a bank, bank of four meters.
Yeah.
Or four hundred lots.
But there, it's not something, there's not much that we could reuse out there, unfortunately.
And from this.
We put that in, or did the Campbell's?
The city put that in.
Yeah, we, so in addition to the six thousand dollars worth of rock, nineteen ninety-seven dollars. Um, there is electric and water and sewer that is, is put in there as well, that's it.
And so what, you, you mentioned the nine thousand dollars would be the additional cost for water?
Yes.
And that is extensions, redoing what we already did?
Pretty much you have to do the, 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 the main, the mains would stay the same, but the, the, the tash, they have to, they pretty much have to do each meter again.
So there's, is there meters out there already?
Yeah, there's meters, ours on every lot, except for the, what is proposed, the five lots along Central Street, there's no meters there.
And you mean the meters, the, there, each lot, assuming the hundred-and-five foot.
That is correct.
Yeah, they might be able to reuse one or two.
And from talking with Mark Mustang, he said that the meter packs posed a big problem for their aspect, because they're in the rear yard. They want everything up front, because nobody wants to let, nobody wants to let them drive their truck in the back of their yard.
Right, thanks to that.
And so.
Yes, that's.
So they have to move all the water to the front.
The, the what?
Electric.
Yeah, electric, yeah. And, and that's the way that most of our electric in town, that is in fact, uh, but there, there has been a change in ideas on how we should do that.
Yeah.
Do you go underground with your electric, or go overhead?
Underground, good.
Basically, you're required to go underground unless you can justify going overhead for new stuff. There has to be a justification for it, otherwise by state law or state regulations, you're required to do that. Alright, something to think about, ponder, um, how soon are we looking at making the decision? I mean, as sooner, I'm assuming the sooner the better would be for you.
Well, I, I think some of the family's health isn't that great, and I think that's what's kind of spawned things on a little bit stronger than what it ever has been before, and. Just kind of getting to the age of realizing that, hey, no, we're, we're not coming back, nobody, nobody has the same feelings about Centralia that, that we did, kind of thing.
Well, I might not have been paying attention, but does the hat, do you or the family have a specific request of us, or is it just?
I don't know it's necessarily a specific request, as much as just, what, what's a, a thing that we could work out, you know, of course. Their request, I guess, what they would like to see is that the city say, no, we'll move everything, and we'll take care of it, and we'll make it like it's supposed to be on paper.
I want the council to know this, aware of this, and that uh, uh, the Campbell Trust, or Darren and I have been working on looking at different options. And Merritt will be getting involved, it comes to the point of coming up with some kind of agreement, where we have a seven, nineteen seventy-five plat. Therefore, we are held to nineteen seventy-five rules as to what we can demand of them by law. I don't, we, I, some cities require you to go back and, and redo stuff, but I don't know that that's, we don't have that, it's not applicable here, and. You have to be careful about how you do that, because at certain point, rights attach, and then if you're gonna take something, there's a cost to that, so. But in this case, we have to, we, we've got a situation where, if, if, if this was a brand-new piece of ground, he'd be required to do a lot more.
I'm just kind of curious, why, any idea, Darren, why this development stalled?
You know, I, I could speculate all day long, and, you know, I was not probably even really thinking too much about real estate in the early nineties, and. You know, I, I, I really don't know, I mean, I have my ideas, and I always have, but they're just my ideas.
And I can remember when those houses got built along Gino Chance. I always expected that other road to fill in too, but it never did. Well, it was my understanding that after, in, in talking to Lynn, and I'm not sure whether Lynn will flip back at the contract or not, but. Supposedly, there was an agreement in place that they would pave the road, and that they would not build on those until that road was paved, and if they ever built on there, they would have to paint the road. Like I say, that's in the conversation with Lynn, I don't have any direct knowledge of it, and I've never seen any people work on it, I don't know. I'll be having to show the, that, their work that, that I have in this file.
If Matt, Matt and I, I brought my file in, and Matt pulled out the file out of the cabinet, and there's no such.
Yeah, and that's entirely possible, uh, and it could very well have been just something that was verbal too, I don't know.
You, you can find all sorts of intent, but I can't see any kind of enforcement.
And, and no, as far as uh, requirements are concerned, uh, when we redid subdivision regs last year, we specifically did not put a sunset. On uh, when flats have to be replatted and they're no longer valid. That it has been done in some places, but uh, we specifically stayed away from that, and we did not want to go there. So, you know, we, we basically said, you know, you're planted, you're good, uh, at some point, uh. Some cities require that, uh, once the rules change, as far as streets and sewers and stuff like that, that you must now need to do rules, some don't. So, we did not even go that far, we said that you can put it in under the standards.
And that's a two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Yeah, nineteen seventy-five, that, I don't know if that question got rate, was you and, well, I guess sixty-one, well, sixty-one's the first zoning rate. So we're only fourteen years into zoning at that point. Anyway, so that's something that we need, I'll, we'll work together on and try and come up with something that makes sense.
And Jim, I, they didn't tell me to come in here and say, well, you go in there and tell them this is what they're gonna do, I mean, it's, that's why there's not really a demand or anything, you know. It, it's kind of a, let's figure this out together, because, you know, nobody wants our feelings at the end of the day, especially me, I don't plan on going anywhere.
I, I think ultimately, we'll have to move the utilities initially.
Yeah, I, 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 it's somebody, we provide the utilities to, to lots.
Well, unless they want hundred-and-five-foot lots, which I tend to think that they probably won't do, or, you know, to something, or you have to be done, the question is, how, what kind of combination do we get?
We just got through spending a hunk of money putting in utilities out in uh, the newest uh, plat that's going through on uh. Cobblestone Lake Estates, Phase Three, and we do that, um, we don't like to do it twice.
Right.
When was uh, Southwest, buddy?
Seventy, seventy-six, I think, seventy-five, maybe seventy-six, right around there. Or not, maybe, two thousand and five, two thousand and six.
Most of all, the utilities there are in the back.
Yeah. This is relatively recent that we've changed it to the front.
And, and Emerald was put in in oh-three, and they're all in the back too.
Yeah.
The, the electric and things.
Was Mystic Ridge, is the electric in the front on Mystic Ridge?
Electric is in the front.
That was the first.
Which I believe was two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
It was, yeah, it was shortly after Southwest.
Well, and the most recent of, you know, Kelly Court is in the front.
Yes. So yes, that, I mean, this is relatively recent, that we have changed, uh, what we wanted, uh, Lynn resented for years doing it, uh. And then things just got to the point where it became more of a problem, yeah, probably in the back, and we were in the front.
Well, in the days of the old alleyways, it, you know, kind of something, but if you're not, you don't have alleys, it becomes really difficult.
Right. Alright, I guess we can work from there?
I'm good.
Okay, do I have anything else?
I know, I got one other thing, uh, I would like to, what do we need to do if, if we can do anything? To open up the discussion about getting rid of this ban of selling fireworks and shooting aerial fireworks off in town? According to Google, and, and you know, I, we're sitting here looking at new ways to generate business and things like that, according to Google. The average person in the United States spends seven dollars and eighty cents per person on fireworks a year. If you take some trace population, that's around thirty-one thousand dollars worth of income, which is based upon, you know, tax base, I don't know if there's a way that it can make it right. To be able to, to bring those dollars into town, rather than somebody sitting out thirty-five feet outside of town, and everybody's still shooting them off in town. And it's kind of a waste on the police department for them to have to run around, in my opinion, and go take firecrackers for forty-year-old kids.
Well, I hear your suggestion, um, I think maybe that's a topic for the General Government meeting, uh, Public Safety meeting, uh, give the Alderman the time to take by.
Well, and also have Danny there.
And, and have Danny there to.
Well, we went recently, went through amending our ordinances and allowing it sales two times in. Well, we went recently, went through amending our ordinances and allowing it sales two times a year with certain stuff. And they had to go through the fire department, that kind of thing. And it basically brought the law into, into, um, congruence with the practice.
Well, we've had, we had a discussion, what, last year, last summer?
Yeah.
And we talked about it some, because, you know, what we're doing is proportioning the sales tax outside the city.
Right.
And it's not going very far outside the city.
Right.
And it's going down about thirty-five, huh?
You know, what, what can be fired inside the city is a separate discussion. But as far as, you know, the sales tax, you know, the sailing, uh, selling of it, uh, you know, if they're just across the, uh, outside the city limits, further illegal, we get those sales tax.
But, yeah, and I, I don't need to, this is, we are currently talking about city administrative business, so.
Yeah.
So, it, it, it'd be, see, that was comments from citizens.
Sorry.
But, but it is something that, that maybe we should revisit, uh, because sales taxes is what our delivery offer.
And, and I don't, I guess, I don't want to, you do have options about making restrictions if we have incredibly dry weather.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chapter eleven is the, uh, is the chapter on fireworks, and, and you, it is possible to sell certain fireworks in the city. What, what you cannot sell, it says it'll, it'll show up, section eleven dash one says it shall be unlawful for any person to sell or offer for sale within the corporate limits, any fireworks that are propelled to the air upon being discharged or denied, including bottle rockets and any other kind of rockets. And any fireworks that propel to the air, okay, aerial, aerial things. And, and then it also says in eleven-two, uh, shall, who shall sell or display any fireworks shall display a sign that, that says, fireworks may not be sold to children age fourteen, except when the child is in the prison, appearing guardian, shooting a bottle rockets. You've got, you've got to put these signs, there are, the laws that are required for things, uh, prohibitions in the city. The, the main thing is that, um, I believe that it says you cannot sell except within, it shall be, seven, go back, going back to subsection B of level one. It shall be unlawful for any person to sell or offer for sale within the corporate limits, any type of fireworks, except between July first to July fourth, eight AM, July first to twelve noon, there's a longer selling period, uh, by state law. So, uh, that's, that's subsection B of level one, I guess it's, it's a separate matter, but, uh.
But, uh, that'll give us a couple weeks so we can, you know, review the ordinances for yourself. Uh, we got a new online code we can look at, give you the opportunity to test that out. And we can discuss it further at General Government when, uh, when Danny's here.
But realistically, if you don't comply, uh, have set our standards to, to the today's standards, uh, as far as when you can sell, uh, and what you can sell, uh, you're gonna put you outside the city limits regardless, no matter how. They're not gonna have to be different standards, one to sell bottle rockets, and one to sell.
Can't believe it, I agree with you.
So, you know, that's the homework, the next couple weeks, alright? We're not gonna have tests, so. Alright, uh, anything else, Matt?
Uh, I have something under Asmae Rye. The, unless Merritt wants to bring up under.
Merritt?
New business.
Well, you know, I mean, are you, you're not a term of law.
Oh, I, I was, I was gonna do that under Asmae Rye.
Yeah, but we do need to.
Yeah.
There, there has been a, uh, a lawsuit filed against the city, and it's, uh, the, the city is not the only defendant. It's, it's pertaining to, uh, the cross-lumber property and, uh.
State farm?
No, state farm is not part of the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
That's fine.
But, uh, the city is a dependent in this, and, uh, uh, our point is that, uh, we believe that the city is not responsible for anything, that, that we shouldn't be part of this. But, uh, the, and the, the allegation that, or the remedy that's being requested by the plaintiff, which is Mr. Pringer, uh, is that there, that the city paid because of what's, I would call inverse condemnation. And that is not covered by our insurance, by law firm insurance.
It's an exclusion to our policy. It's not, it is not an error or omission by the board, it is not, it was no accident, there was no, you know, it is, it was a caused by policy and lack, they're, they're saying we took to value for their property.
It just was filed, uh.
As something we didn't do.
Well, it's, they're, they're saying that we should have, uh, not issued a, a building permit when we did. It's, to me, it's not our, our fight, uh, but anyway. The plaintiff feels differently, and has filed a lawsuit, and it's not covered by our insurance. So, uh, what Matt was talking about was that we probably can, uh, have a recess meeting to approve, uh, a law firm to represent us in this, since our insurance is not covered this, including the legal fees for this. We're not in a position, at this time, we're still getting the information together to, uh, to propose something to you all as far as, uh, the law firm.
We, 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 we have to have something to, we have to have a response filed by February thirteenth. If we, if we come together on the second, we still would have, as long as we have, have, uh, if you give Merritt and I the, the ability to widow it down to a best, um, a, a best choice, basically, we can have that ready by February second. We could do it at an earlier date, Merritt is not available because he's working in another city on the twenty-sixth. I prefer he be here, we have that discussion. But it would be, it would be, it would be something we're eligible to discuss at a closing session. So, we're talking about having a closed session part to the February second meeting. So, you'd like process recess then on the sec, to the second, this meeting?
Now, it, does that give them, uh, enough time to respond?
Yeah.
I would say so, uh, e- even, even so.
I mean, I realize it's somewhat preliminary.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, I think it does.
So, you're purely gonna come to the meeting on the second with your recommendations for us to make a decision?
Okay, that should be enough time to get information together for that.
Okay.
So, that's part of what I've been doing, and, uh, uh, as well as, uh, working with, uh, Heather on some of the matters for the election, and, uh, so, uh, that, I guess, concludes my, my report.
Is there, uh, made any progress on our Doug ordinance?
Well, I was told that that didn't need to be ready till probably at least next month. It was, we would be finalized regarding, regarding that, uh, for the April newsletter is what I under, remember which would be. Finalizing it in March, which means discussing it in February.
Heather, do you hear?
Um, just to remind everybody, the election filing ends tomorrow at five.
Did it? Asmae Rye?
I am. Go ahead.
Go ahead, I just wanted a, a quick announcement, I guess, uh, kind of brief meeting with Danny and, uh, Rush. And as well, we met with representatives of the Fire Protection District, and they, um, wanted to continue discussions we've had over the years about our relationship with them. Coincidentally, their contract with Columbia ends in April.
Coincidentally?
Well, it's, it's sort of kind of giving you a little bit of background, I'll be honest. And then what, I, after the meeting, this, we don't need to do this as part of the meeting, it's just a detail, but kind of like to get with the people who are going to Sedalia, make sure we know how everyone's getting there. Because I'm gonna be in Jeff City at a, the training for, the training for the TAP grant is that day, and it's mandatory. And I'm done at four, so there's all sorts of options. And which would include driving all the way back to Sedalia, but hoping to come up with some other option. To selfishly speak.
Alright, uh, the ones that are going to Sedalia is Don and David, myself, and Max.
Interesting, is this, was it in this board?
Yeah, I mean, is it in this board, central region, region, yeah.
So, at the end, we'll get together and, uh, that's how we're gonna do it. Alright, alright, can you give us a, a quick rundown on the Board of Adjustment meeting?
Yes.
Quick, for your digest version.
At the property which will become eight oh-nine Central or Lot F in the Dexter subdivision, subdivision, the developer, who coincidentally was named Dexter, well, actually not coincidentally, was building his first house. He poured the foundations within two months of when he got the building permit. It was, I was early on in the job, and I was very slow in getting the, uh, lot, the, the setback measured. He measured it from the curb, so I told him that wasn't close enough, that was, he was too close to the street. He had a slab poured and a lot of money invested. I said, the only thing you do is go to the Board of Adjustment, he went to the Board of Adjustment. Based on those circumstances, he was granted a variance, um, so that he was the prep. And I won't get into the legal leads of it, I'm sure Merritt would if he wanted him to, but I, I would say that substantial justice was done, even if it wasn't ideal in terms of, we certainly don't want to set a precedent saying that if you build it before I get there, you get to keep it. We certainly, so how far off?
Seven feet.
Yeah, he measured from the back of the curb rather than the start of the property line, which is behind.
That was about more like a nine feet.
Yeah, it looked a nine.
So, we must, we want to set up a, a Dexter rule where you have to, you know, s- give, give the city cer- certain amount of notice before we, you start pulling foundations and that sort of thing. You just have to work carefully with the, the development community, so that they know that there's needs to be a little bit of, you know.
Well, I have no problem with them doing it anytime they want. What I have a problem with is them not, uh, measuring from the right place. If they don't measure from the right place, and they don't bother to wait for the inspection, then as far as I'm concerned, that is their liability. They chose to do so, and they should bear the cost of that.
Well, the Board of Adjustment heard the arguments, and Board of Adjustment made their decision.
Required four out of five voted to grant a variance.
And what's the legality of what happened? On, on, cause the way I read the, uh, the information was that, uh, basically, there's no real legal basis for granting them a variance.
Well, the Board of Adjustment felt differently, and I guess that's all I can say. They, they, I think in part based it on the fact that, uh, because of the amount of money spent, and, and, uh, the fact that this was, uh, this first, this person's, uh, job building it, and, and, uh, it would never happen again. This person would not, would, would know, never, it would never happen again.
Well, the guy's father was the developer.
That's true.
He was there.
So, did he have the permit pulled before he poured all this?
Yeah, he, he pulled the permit, and I failed to get out there in timely fashion, I'll say that. I mean, it should be done within a couple of days, and he, it was two months before I got out there. I missed that part of, I'm, I'm sure Lynn told me, I didn't, I'm not trying, I, I screwed up. And then he, and he did, and he screwed up as well, because he didn't ask his father, seek the right advice, read the rules, whatever. So, but at that point, it's on a full sack, it's, um, you, you could fit a large vehicle between the garage door and the side door.
Well, I mean, the way I read the, uh, regulations on the Board of Adjustment, that, uh, the cost to the developer is not a factor that's to be considered, and the fact that he didn't bother to wait or didn't bother to ask, ignorance is not an excuse to the law, uh, whether it's criminal or civil.
I don't know, I'm not sure that the city has, I, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna argue with that, I can't argue with your, what you just said. I can tell you that there was four to one vote to allow it.
I think it was a bad decision.
Yeah.
You know, do you want to be a bleeding heart and say, cause basically what that says to me is, if you go ahead and do it, we'll fix it for you. We don't care what you do wrong, we'll fix it. That is not the way you run things, and just asking for more problems down the road. I realize we probably can't do anything about it. I don't think there's any legal recourse for us, is there?
Well, I mean, there, there is the appeals to the court, but, to a court, but that would be expensive, um, there probably is a recourse, but, uh, but it was, it was the city's own Board of Adjustment to make the decision.
I realize that.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd make me any happier with it.
I understand.
Makes me wonder if we shouldn't have different people on the Board of Adjustment. They don't understand their responsibilities.
It hasn't been a long time.
Yep.
Still haven't made a reason. I, I will say this, I've seen Board of Adjustments in other cities do similar things. I'm not saying it's any better, but I've heard the hard, people argue that the hardship is that already done. It's not a good legal argument, I guess.
I, I can pretty much guarantee that if he does it again, he's not gonna get very expensive.
I would certainly hope not. I would think he'd be treading on very thin ice if he tried to fix for those same.
I would think that other developers, if they had seen the outcome, I don't think they would do it.
Well, I don't want it to happen again, but I don't, under any circumstance, whether through ignorance or otherwise, because it's, it was a bad legal decision. It's had some very poor precedents.
If it ever happens again to anybody else, they're gonna be mad.
Yeah.
If they don't get a variance.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And they're gonna come in and say, well, you gave it to such and such.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the city staff case was made, I thought, existed and carried the name. There was, there was no, I didn't see, the, the only, the mistake made by the city staff was, the length of time it took me to get there, that, um.
And what he should have done was to request that you hurry up and get there, rather than go ahead and do something as stupid as what he did.
Well, one, I, I will, not, I, I, this is not a legal argument, but I do not think he did it with any malice, I think it was pure ignorance.
I, I understand that.
I don't think it was any shit.
There was a price for ignorance.
I think what the board felt was. I think what the board felt was had they, had the developer tear out the concrete, redo it in another manner, that would have put a sour taste in his mouth and he probably would have pulled his businesses out of town and went and built somewhere else.
That wouldn't bother me.
Well, apparently it affected the Board of Adjustment enough to make them render the decision that they made. A lot of things that we do don't make everybody happy, but, yeah, we still gotta do it.
If, I think in the accusation, the, not accusation, the issue is that they were too human. You know, and were too willing to forgive. And I, what you're saying about everybody else will expect that, I, I, you know, I think it's important not to draw too much precedence from a variance granted and these are individual decisions. They are, they're, the whole purpose of a Board of Adjustment is to give case by case.
Review.
Review. And the one thing I will say is it was, it was on odd shaped lot at the end of the cul-de-sac. And if there was gonna be an error made, especially by somebody who was a novice in the business and a novice in the, it was not among my tasks and Fulton, that's no excuse. But it was not an ideal, it was an ideal situation for an error.
I mean, I, I just went, I mean, me and you just went through it over at Lucas.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe she should have went ahead and did it. Then she would have, she would have got, you know, what she wanted.
Well, I don't have a dog in the race, other than, Don, you know, you're, you're the chamber appointed member to credit. And for you to sit there and say you don't care if somebody takes their business out of town, in my opinion, shows great emphasis on why you were not the person for the job. Because your job, what you're setting up there is to protect the city and to try to grow this city. Not care whether somebody leaves or not is ridiculous.
But I, I think we should keep this on the facts of the case rather than individual personnel.
Yeah. So, ultimately, the Board of Adjustment made their decision and sort of the city taking it to higher court, I think, you know, the decision's probably gonna stand.
And the good part is, is he said it at the beginning, this rarely comes up.
Yeah, when was the last Board of Adjustment meeting?
A long time ago.
Two thousand and seven, I think it was.
Yeah, yes, sir?
I don't know the best way to put this, so forgive me. Did the lady who got, who was very volume, got very loud regarding her porch and how far it was from the street? Did she ever go to the Board of Adjustment? Do you know who I'm talking about?
I know, I know the one you're talking about, but I don't believe they went to the Board of Adjustment. I, I don't recall that. Okay, any more as may arise? Hearing done, I think we need to recess the meeting till February second at seven PM.
Can we motion to recess the meeting?
I have a motion to second to recess the meeting. I'll vote for it, say aye. Thank you very much.